Okay, welcome to the Bronxville Village Planning Board meeting. Appreciate everyone coming out on this beautiful night. We first have Michael Goldman, and we have minutes from the special meeting that we had regarding the on-street dining applications a few weeks ago. I think everyone's had a chance to review those minutes. If there aren't any comments on them, would someone like to move the minutes?
Someone move?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right, good. We have minutes of the prior meeting. First up tonight is the Taco Project. Is there someone here from the applicant? And if you can please go to the podium, thank you, and identify yourself. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nick Faustini. I'm an architect representing Taco Project. The business owned several years, I'm sorry, operated or opened up several years ago along Pondfield Road. It was, its certificate of occupancy is for a carryout food establishment, which is limited to 12 seats. That was a continuing CFO that basically changed with many tenants before them. The Taco Project has submitted this application to increase the number of seating. We do not have any architectural work, or structural work, or interior alteration work proposed as part of this application. It's simply adding more seats and tables. So the current, or the original set of drawings only had seating at the window area and adjacent to the entrance, and that is the original submitted application. They are proposing, if we could just go back to the slide before, seating further along the side of the store and into the center area, for a total of 35 seats. The occupancy remains the same. From a building code perspective, it's less than 50 occupants. It's, the application is before the board this evening as a matter of local law. It just changes the use from carryout food establishment to a restaurant. There are no zoning implications in terms of parking. It's the same parking requirement, whether it was a restaurant or a carryout food establishment.
Would they still keep the seats outside as well?
I believe the intent would be to file separately for the outside seating when the time comes.
And could you speak to crowding? I guess there are sort of two crowding issues that come to mind. One is interior. They do a lot of takeout business, and folks are currently in the areas where the tables are going to be. And, you know, will they be spilling outside? And also, there's a real issue of, you know, cars double parking at the entrance to Garden Avenue, coming off of Pondfield. Not a great place to double park, and there are constantly cars there. Could this contribute to further crowding in that respect also? So...
I don't, I don't believe so, because the seating would be for the interior, for patrons eating there. There is a dedicated table for typical, any restaurant these days that have delivery service, they have a dedicated food pickup area. That table will remain unchanged by this application. It's simply adding tables closer to the entrance of the store. I'm not aware of any crowding issues in terms of in the store. I've been there at times where, you know, patrons are seated. Can't speak for the delivery personnel, but I believe I can advise management to instruct those not to double park or so forth, in order to meet village requirements.
Other questions?
I was actually gonna, I was wondering if the parking would not, like, that wouldn't be an issue, because there'd be less people doing takeout and coming back and forth than maybe sitting in there and eating. So I was actually thinking the opposite when I was saying that they were gonna have in, in seating there that may...
Yes, the change here would be for interior eating.
Yeah, I mean, if they're fortunate, they'll have both. They'll have people sitting at the tables and people taking out. That would be the hope, I would assume.
Will the staff, staffing of the establishment increase? Will there be...
No, it would remain the same number of staff. They have about six to seven people per shift.
So, no waitresses or waiters?
There are waitresses and waiters there now, so it won't increase. It's essentially just a continuation of the current operation.
Any questions here?
Is there a reason why, like, a differentiation, why something would be considered takeout versus a restaurant?
Paul, can you comment?
Is there, like, it was referred to, it says it's takeout, and now it's a change of, change of use to a restaurant. Is there anything that we should be considering from that standpoint? Because it seems they're, they're very similar. I mean, obviously, you're eating in-house in the restaurant.
Yeah, the main difference is, is the number of seats, certainly, obviously. And, and other than that, and the zoning parts, it seems to fit.
Okay, if there are no other questions, the board may open up for a public comment on this. So we'll open up the public meeting on Taco Project, if there's anyone who would like to come up and say a few words.
Good evening. Surprised Michael you're now, can I read that far? Is it chairman?
You know, things happen over time, Mary Ann.
It's been a long time since I've been here.
Yeah.
I received...
So I'm sorry, Mary Ann, if you can just identify yourself for the audience.
I'm Mary Ann Pope.
Yep.
I own Eleven Garden Avenue, which is the reason that I got this notice. I am Michael's neighbor, and so we probably share some of the same problems that occur in the lot. I received the notice and looked at the, what the notice listed, and read, looked at the floor plans, and then read the zoning code, and I guess I'm more, more wary of the change from a takeout to an in-dine. I don't, I'm sure you all know Eleven Garden faces the parking lot, which is often a problem. But I'd like to go through what I prepared. So I'm here because I do own Eleven Garden, and since the pandemic, I think the, the village and the board has been diligent about occupying, getting occupied, the, the empty spaces, and revitalizing the village. I, I think it's significant, a significant achievement, and I think it also generates a lot of sales tax revenue for the village, which was missing during the pandemic. And since the pandemic, the village has sanctioned the use of outdoor spaces for a number of restaurants, eliminating spaces in town, as we all know, and making it more difficult to park. Again, the village has been very successful in revitalizing the shopping district, which was sorely needed after the pandemic. Anyway, my issues of concern are parking, late-night noise in the Garden Avenue lot, hours of operation, garbage management and collection schedules, and a few other items. The first page of the application lists the change of use from carryout food establishment with 12 seats to a restaurant with greater than 12 seats. That's the first page, quote. The second page lists that the changes are 35 seats. The applicant requesting a change to a restaurant with 35 seats, which is triple minus one seat, right, 35, minus one seat, the current seats in the carryout establishment. The application states no change in interior layout, only increase in number of seats. Remember, I took and read what was in print here and what I saw in the paper, and some of these things, as I have heard, are somewhat different. But at any rate, I understand there is no change in construction, but there is a change in the layout, which is significant when it comes to, to restaurants. There was no mention in the printed form that there were 13 tables to be added, along with the 23 additional chairs. So I, I consider that a significant change. I know the fire code requires set spacing behind chairs and between tables to allow movement. I don't recall what it is, but presumably the, the plan meets the code not extending into the area of egress. So the point being is, the way I understand it is that each chair fixed on the plan is there, and then from that spot, there must be a setback for a person to get out of the seat or to go between tables. And in some of these spots, the ones towards the back, it's pretty close. I don't have the right glasses to be reading that far, that far, but in some of them, it's pretty close. I don't know, there, there is a set number of how much space you need to allow movement out of a chair. So I'm just wondering, it's pretty tight against the wall there, and my understanding that the egress area should not be obstructed, so where the tables, where there are in the back of the store, where there are tables, chairs against, I assume, counters, those chairs are, as they're located before they're moved, are on the egress line. So I don't know. I, I, you know, I just read the plan, knowing what I know about plans. The application further states no anticipated number of employees, which you people just add. I would assume that if they're having 35 seats, they would need additional, additional wait service. No parking, this, no existing parking off-street provided or proposed. Although the carryout Taco Project was credited with not having to provide parking in the previous application, which is, the requirement is one space for every 300 square feet, and there's been no change in the actual square footage, so that would remain that, okay, they didn't have to provide additional spaces. But then when you change the use according to what's listed in the code, you can then, the board can then reexamine that parking requirement, which at this point is really not a requirement, because there are no spaces, which would require the question of parking be revisited based on the number of seats that are requested. Based on what I saw in print, and read only in print, and saw on plan, it seemed to me that the application understates the changes. While there's no structural change, in a restaurant, adding tables and chairs is a big deal. The, the, in, in terms of parking availability and late-night hours in the Garden Avenue lot, in the immediate area of, of Taco Project, we have Haiku, we have the new Mimi's Gelato, we have Under Hills Crossing, we have Slave to the Grind, and plus the other retailers. Everybody needs parking for their customers. And as you said, on the corner going down Garden, the double parking, plus the trucks delivering, too, when the trucks are delivering, it's, it can be an issue. Changing the carryout, you, sorry, as a carryout establishment, it's reasonable to assume that the Taco Project customers would spend less time taking up spaces when parking to pick up their orders than an individual who is sitting to dine for an hour or two. Changing the carryout use to a restaurant, tripling the number of seats to 35, minus that one, increases the number of spaces required and the length of time one spends dining in a restaurant and taking up a space. Assuming most restaurants aim for a minimum of two seedings in the evening or in the day, that's generally the rule of them, the number of customers per day might grow to 70, which I'm sure they would be very happy to have. Daytime parking, and, and my issue is Garden Avenue, because my house squarely faces Garden Avenue and that lot. Daytime parking until 6:00 PM. The Garden Avenue lot is filled daily with two, three, and four-hour public parking limits, requiring a car be moved at the end of the limit. Often, there is no space available to move a car at the end of the limit, which is why I graciously accepted your and Karen's offer to park my car for one week while I had improvements made. So I researched the parking very thoroughly. The merchant spaces have different time limits. There's no way of telling how many Taco Project customers will dine in the restaurant versus takeout during the day. Nobody could anticipate that. Parking after 6:00 PM and 12:00, this is more my issue. It is, well, and also not being able to get a space right across the street from my house on occasion. It is probably safe to assume most Taco Project customers will dine after 6:00, when there are more spaces available in the lot. We can all, I think, safely make that assumption. Some observations. People returning to the lots, to the lot in groups, over-beveraged or not, after a fun night at one of the Pondfield Road restaurants, often don't think about the noise they are making, or of the adjacent apartment and houses. More than one night, several nights, one can be awakened by the noise on the lot. Although parking is a major issue in the village, and I've spent a considerable amount of time discussing it, the net-net is, there are no additional parking spaces to be had in the village for this application or for any future applications. I think it's important to document the parking issues, even though it appears that there is no solution to the problem, other than imposing other limitations in the business district. Hours of operation, garbage management, and other questions. What are the proposed hours, this is specific to the Taco Project, what are the proposed hours of operation for the restaurant? Does the carryout currently serve beer and wine? I believe it does. Other alcohol? And is it the plan to seek a liquor license if one is currently held, or if one could be obtained? As a full restaurant, there will be additional park, there'll be additional garbage, not currently the case with takeout. Takeout customer takes the food, takes the wrapping, takes the leftovers, and disposes of them at home. Restaurants have a great deal more garbage to manage. Will an additional dumpster be needed? What days and times will the garbage be picked up? Hopefully not at 5:00 AM in the morning. Hopefully not at 5:00 AM. And this was not on the application. Will there be additional pickups during the summer months, when garbage smells most? Will the dumpsters be washed after the garbage is picked up to eliminate odors? And will the surrounding area be cleaned? Can dumpsters, other garbage pails, metal cabinets, and metal shelving currently in the back area of the restaurant have some sort of enclosure? I think those entering 77 Pondfield would be glad not to see the dumpsters, the garbage cans, the metal shelves, and the metal cabinets that are currently out there. When I attempted to check the village code regarding restaurants, and I think this is a big one, I could not find any information other than that the section had been amended. I couldn't find the section on restaurants. Perhaps I was not searching correctly. Is there a section on restaurants in our village code?
I think we'd have to ask Mr. Taft. Paul, are you looking?
I couldn't find it. It just said amended, blah, blah, blah.
One second.
Let's wait for Paul.
Well, I'll get off the podium.
No, no, just...
Lastly, I thank the board for your time, and hope that the Taco Project, excuse me, understands that residents and owners on Garden Avenue have to be vigilant about commercial developments, as it affects our residential properties. It's nothing personal, and in fact, I would add, I have had the takeout, and it is quite good.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Paul, anything to add before we go to other public comments here?
There, there, the only parts that we, we have is in, I believe, 31031 and 31030, the standards for the different uses. I think mostly for restaurants, it's about parking. So she's, she's not entirely incorrect.
And in terms of fire code issues, I'm assuming that the fire department reviews these things before they...
Yes.
What is, what is the actual space required? Is the architect here?
Well, it's rather complex, but an easy answer would be 19 inches...
19 inches.
...from the table.
From the table.
Yeah.
But that includes the movement of the chair away from the table?
Well, it's, it's, like I say, it's a complex issue, but right off the table, it's 19 inches. And we, we...
We'll review this and we'll review it before we issue my next comment.
So before we pull the architect back up, why don't we give a chance to see if there's other public comment on, on this application? And if not, maybe the architect or the restaurant owner would like to respond, you're welcome to.
So the, the application or the drawings in, in front of you actually present the chairs pulled out, in a pulled-out position. The egress path is required to be three feet wide, which is delineated on that plan as well. The dining area, areas, and they're all considered movable table and seating, which is classified as 15 square feet per person, and that's how we derive the number of seats, the maximum numbers that can be in this space. So that's all delineated on the plan there. So in terms of egress, fire code, all, all of those codes are being met. With respect to the hours of operation, those would remain unchanged. The business has been in operation for many years. I believe, I did speak with ownership about it. It's Sunday through Thursday, 11 to 9:00, Monday and Friday, 11 to 10:00. So those hours remain unchanged.
I know she was asking about waste disposal.
Waste disposal, as I'm not terribly familiar of the waste disposal there, but I believe it is located in the back of the building, shared by all of the tenants of the building, which, there are several tenants in that building, both another restaurant as well as other commercial spaces. I'm not, I cannot speak about the, the refuse removal, but I can bring it to management's, you know, attention, that there's a concern, and that they should speak to the building owner about trying to make sure it's not impactful to the neighbors.
And did I understand you correctly that effectively, this is a plan that maximizes the number of seats that could be in there as per code?
Yeah.
There could have been alternative drawings that didn't maximize. Is that fair?
There, there are limitations based on previous drawings that were filed, going back to the 80s, in this space. There's been tenants that have changed use many times in, in many spaces, but this is the, the maximum number of seats permitted with the current layout and configuration of the space.
Any other public comment on this, or questions for the architect from the, from the board before we go into our discussion?
So one question, on the application, it says no change to refuse location, and if you're gonna have this many more, you're gonna obviously have a lot more trash than you currently have, as you said. So I would like to know, and I think Paul talked about it briefly, and I'd like to get your point on it, you sent us some thoughts on it, that there will be a, a very large increase in trash. And I, I don't know what this current story is, but you're saying that the current containers are used by everyone in that area? So maybe it's more for Paul than for the architect?
I'm presently working with the management company for the building, and some of that's due to, they're watching things in the back there, and that going on to Garden Avenue. So we have requested that they put in a system that will be a separator, so all the water go in there and dirty water be separated. So we're working on that. We are working on dumpsters. They have separate dumpsters for Scalini's and for Taco Project, and then a separate one for the remaining tenants. Their stuff is mostly private. And there is plenty of room back there, it's just really more, I think, the positioning of that. We talked about maybe putting fences around them, which I, you know, initially I thought that was a good idea, but then it becomes an area where just trash accumulates and it gives, you know, space for the lawn to run. So I am working with the management company on that.
Okay, thank you.
Hopefully have something in the next month or so that seems reasonable, and, you know, I think they have changed so that they're all picking up on this at the same time. I think it is in the morning, because we were picking up separately one afternoon. You know, and trying to keep up top of that and making sure the dumps aren't leaking, and that the covers are tight and all of that, just, you know, I'd like to do that.
This may be a detail that isn't known to you, but the, I assume Scalini's, being a restaurant, not a takeout, probably is a good proxy for the amount of dumpster space that the Taco Project would have. Do you know how extensive Scalini's?
Well, I think both of them have, you know, one for garbage and one for cardboard, so they're two separate dumpsters.
Okay.
And with that going there to verify, and I remember that actually Scalini's is probably smaller than Taco.
Because Taco has both...
It would have takeout and dine-in, where Scalini is not really a takeout...
Right.
...establishment.
Yeah. Okay, well then, maybe we'll close the public meeting and go into a discussion. We'd like to start.
It does seem like, if I can...
Yeah.
It does seem like parking and dealing with garbage and et cetera, space for the dumpsters, et cetera, is important, but it sounds like the space is not likely to be a constraint. It's really more the things that you're addressing with the separator, to make sure it's sanitary back there. So my main question is about parking. I mean, I honestly don't know how busy the Garden Avenue lot is, and whether that's...
At nighttime, though, is it? Is it become less busy at night?
Yes, after 6:00.
And that's when...
But during the day, there's not a space to be had.
Right, that's because of all the people, right, right.
I can only realize that once I got all the rules, and couldn't get a space for a week, for someone to park for five days, that your two-hour meter, once it's done, you have to move the car. You can't just feed your, your farm, you have to move the car to another space. So if you're stuck in two-hour meter, you better be there at the end of time. So it's two, three, or four. The four-hour meters are closer to 77 Pondfields, closer to Scalini's, because I have scoped it out, and all of the merchant parking spaces are along Garden Avenue, and you cannot park in those. If you're in that space, then you have overnight permit. If you're in that merchant space, at 8:00 in the morning, you have a ticket. So the merchant space, margin is longer, you can feed to a longer, you have an permit, and you can feed to the longer...
But it does sound like there is adequate parking in the evening, so it's really the lunch crowd that would be an issue, if there is an issue.
I don't know how busy, how busy, if Google tells you by hour or a day a week, how busy it is. You should have seen us again.
If they could predict, that would be even more helpful.
The artificial intelligence probably can, I'm sorry, Eileen, you were saying...
What I was gonna say is, from the town's perspective, if people are already in town for lunch, so let's say the students, I'm not saying the students are gonna be walking I'm not saying the students are going to be walking down to Taco Project, but it's really nice to have a place where you can sit down for casual lunch in town without having fancy waiting, waitress service or waiter service. So it is a nice place for kids or for, you know, people who want something casual to come into town and just sit and have, you know, a salad or a taco. And that's what was always kind of there before, but it was very tight, there was not enough seats, so you couldn't sit with your friend because you'd be sitting next to each other side by side, not being able to have a conversation. So I think that eating, eating in is a nice addition to the village for making it more walkable.
Comments down here?
I thought it was, the application was pretty straightforward until I heard, you know, your comments about trash and noise, and I think those are all legitimate comments. I, I think we had someone in before that said there was plenty of parking in the evening. And, and so I don't know if that's then a problem, and I don't know what the load is, whether or not it's more of a lunchtime crowd or an evening crowd or, or whatever. It seems like during the day, parking is just difficult across the board, and it lets up during the evening. So, I mean, I think if we can work out the trash issues and, and, because I think that's a very legitimate issue. But I, I agree with the comments that, that you just made about it's a nice, nice to have a place that you can go into that's very casual. I assume that the menu isn't changing at all, that it's going to be the same.
No change to the menu.
Sort of a takeout menu. So I don't know how long people are going to be sitting, enjoying a takeout menu in the, in the space, so.
Really, this restaurant serves the community. It serves Bronxville proper generally. There are other Taco Project restaurants throughout Westchester for, let's say, vehicular traffic. So I think really this location is more served by, by those walking along Pond Field and by residents. Because if, if there was like a quick pickup kind of place, you can go to another location that's not too far away.
Albert, anything you'd want to?
I, I agree with most of what's said. I think the parking really isn't part of my decision about saying yes or no, because it's not really, it's not there, theirs to solve. That's, sounds like a bigger issue. So as the plans are presented in your presentation, I'm in favor of the project as it, as it is applied for.
Yes, I'll just add some comments here, and I'll try not to be wearing my Garden Avenue resident hat as I do so. I think my initial reaction to it, and I think Mary Ann touched on this a little bit, is it's a very crowded plan. And I guess the question that I would have for the applicant is could you achieve the goal of having considerably more seating than the dozen seats you have now and achieve what Eileen was talking about in terms of, you know, having more spaces for students and others to sit there without cramming a seat into every possible spot within the space and have it be an improvement for the restaurant, but have it moderate just a little bit in terms of the impact on the, on the village? I guess would be my question.
So, forgive me, so the intent was to establish tables and seats? I'm sorry, were you saying to reduce the seating?
To reduce the number, yeah.
And the purpose of the?
The purpose of that would be in terms of the external impacts that this is having. If you have thirty-five seats, that's different than having twenty-eight seats in terms of the impact, it's just math.
I think the demand is there, given that they've been with the community for many years now. Demand is there, and there are people looking for seats. There are other establishments, restaurants along Pond Field. So if, perhaps if they're looking to sit at a restaurant, they may not just sit here, they'll go sit elsewhere at another restaurant. And so that won't really change the parking, let's say, for those driving in. Really, it's just managing those that want to sit in the restaurant and just giving them a place to be comfortable. And as I, you know, I think as some of the board members mentioned, most of that parking, most of the parking concern on Garden is during the day, whereas more of this influence will happen in the evening hours where there may be some available parking or more available parking. To, to put a number to, to it, I think the, the demand is there, so anything less than what was proposed, you know, would probably, I'd have to speak with ownership about it. I'm just not sure if I.
And ownership isn't here this evening?
No, they're not here this evening.
I guess I, one of the things I would note is that when we consider applications for beyond-street dining, right?
Yeah.
And we've added during the pandemic and now in the post-pandemic era, a lot of tables without considering the parking load that those additional tables will, will have. And.
Yeah.
And tho, and those tables were taking away parking spaces. So this, this to me doesn't seem like an unmanageable addition. And certainly the burden of reducing the demand on parking or not increasing the demand on parking wouldn't be very evenly distributed if we denied this application or reduce it in comparison to what we're being asked to do in on-street dining.
We're done with the public meeting, but go ahead, please.
But you might have more to go to the podium.
Since you're here.
I do have one other question about the clientele. I think this lady, is it Marshall?
Heidi Marshall.
I can't read that far. Anyway, that you had mentioned that it was nice that the kids could have a place to go, that, is this a younger clientele in Taco?
It's mixed, I mean, I don't want to say it with the clientele, I mean, it's people from Bronxville, but I'm just saying for like the teenagers or younger middle school children or, you know, people.
Right, which would be.
Walking through town, just to go in for, for lunch is, it's a nice.
Well, I'm, lunch I'm not concerned about, it's dinner and later. The Garden Avenue lot is a wonderful spot to hang out if you're in seventh, eighth, ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth grade. And so, you know, this is, gee, we've got a great spot. It used to be ice cream, now the kids go for, you know, more lavish things, tacos and lang's and so on. But, but my concern, my main concern is the use, misuse of the lot in the evening to being a hangout place where kids would gather or just people are noisy that, coming back. I have had occasion where I had to replace a wall when someone was over-beveraged and ran into the wall across from the lot. That was about seven years ago, so.
And I think some of these things probably go beyond the purview of the planning board in terms of what we do and versus the trustees, versus the police department, et cetera. Would someone like to make a motion?
I move we approve the application.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor, I'm sorry.
I apologize.
We can still have discussion, let's do it.
With the understanding that the issues relating to trash and the separator are adequately addressed. But I, I don't, I'm not sure that's necessary because that'll happen in due course anyway, right?
Yes.
So I take away my interruption.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, good luck. Okay, next on the agenda, I believe, is Pete's. Do we have someone here from Pete's Tavern? Of course we do.
I'm back. I'm Stephanie McEwen, owner and manager of Pete's Park Place Tavern. I'm going to start by apologizing for wasting time, last, last one. I've submitted for one spot only, everything else is the same.
And otherwise, I mean, it's the identical plan, right? Same structure, same everything, it's just one spot.
Right, well, the, the blocks are, will be gone, just the, doing the ballards and the planters. We are not doing any sort of tented structure or anything like that.
Yeah. If there aren't any questions for her, I was going to open up the public meeting on this. Let's go ahead and open the public meeting for this application.
I'm just public meeting myself. I just wanted to point out one thing about parking and traffic and stuff.
Yeah, please.
We do have a traffic issue, I think, too. I wanted to point out what we do to try and combat, we have an Uber Eats issue and all that double parking. I'm not, like, it has nothing to do with me, but I know that that's one of our problems on Park Place, and I, I see it all the time. I often call just to kind of get someone to move them along, but I'm thinking tickets. An Uber driver does not want to pay tickets. And ironically, when I brought this up, my son actually got pulled over right there, which was really funny because it was right after, I was like, we should be booming people over, but just ticket everybody. Because what happens is the guy who's doing the parking meter, he has no control if you're double parked. But as we all know, because we're all in Bronxville, I mean, my tickets get pretty high. I get ticketed faster in a spot than I do double parked. And a lot of that, I have these, I have these two customers who love to sit outside, and they often look at how many people double park while there's three spots on Park Place because of jumping in to, and I don't want to name restaurants because we're all here together, but it's just the jumping in factor, and I'm, I'm not going to think that to-go is, is worse than, than sitting and all that stuff. But if they were ticketed, we would stop. I mean, I know I stop when I get a ticket, right? So if they were ticketed, just like when you're taking that wrong turn off of Pond Field onto Park Place and you're so embarrassed to get that ticket right in front of Pete's, I see you all get it, they pull you over right in front of me. If we all got ticketed, it would stop. It's a lot of like flashing the, the lights or the horn that the cops do because they're in the car. But if they had walked, I think they'd have a lot more success from stopping this Uber Eats. Pete's, as we may have some complaints, we don't take to-gos. We had to shut down Grubhub, we had to, and it's hard because they don't need our approval. The restaurants here do not need to give approval for Grubhub and, and all those things to take orders. We kind of try and get tricky, we take credit cards over the phone, that way we know that it's not a Grubhub person calling. There's little things like that, we're taking a hit, we don't take them between certain hours. And if you're a local family, I'm sorry, sometimes you want your chicken fingers, but we can't do it. We're getting a little bit of flack right now because people are upset at just not, our inconsistent hours of taking to-gos. But that's combating all those people that are double parking and running into stores for what they think is five minutes, but it's really causing a jam up. So that's my public comment.
So we'll ask Paul to speak to his friends in high places at Village Hall, and we'll see what, what can, what can happen. So with that, I think we'll close the public meeting. Any discussion on the board about Pete's?
I just appreciate the fact that they have reduced by half.
Yep, thank you.
Their footprint, and especially on that busy area.
I apologize for not doing that before.
We're all good, everyone's good, and it's all, appreciate any other discussion, or if not, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second, all in favor? All right, thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Okay, and last but not least, we have La Casa.
Hello again. Sorry. My name is John Spencer Pingel, and I'm the owner of La Casa in Bronxville. I presented the proposal, as you recall, at the last meeting, and there was a question about the size and the space. And so basically back specifically to talk about that. If you could just go back a few, Paul, just, I just wanted to remind people of the space we're talking about. That's on the street-side view. The next picture gives you a view from the sidewalk. And then finally, a view of an individual table, which are what we call cabanas, which provide sort of a semi-private space for people to dine that's safe and flat and deals with the issues we have of the hill and the slope. So at the last meeting, I presented a proposal for three parking spaces, reduction from four parking spaces with eight tables and twenty-four seats. I was requested to consider reducing space in the number of tables. And so, you know, I mentioned at the time that I needed three spaces to make it work financially. I went back and, and did a more detailed analysis, looking at, you know, the, the top row is the, is the proposal, the three parking spaces with the eight tables, which has a payback period of 1.6 years for me, which is not spectacular, but is reasonable. As we reduce the tables, you have to actually reduce three tables to get down to two spaces. But basically, any reduction in tables extends the payback period to two years or more, which is, is not a particularly attractive proposition from a financial standpoint. So if we can go to the next chart, I wanted to come back to my original proposal, which I believe is consistent with the policy guidance from the, from the village, consistent with the proposal from Underhill Crossing, which was approved at the last meeting. And just to restate what we talked about last time, I think the major issues that certainly the trustees were concerned around, around parking congestion and blocking other merchants, none of those issues apply to the specific location that, that we have at La Casa. So my plan is just to kind of go through those couple of points specifically. And, you know, I think this is the most complicated one because I know you guys mentioned a number of times at the last meeting, you're trying to consistently apply this policy, and it's, it's not easy to do because the policy's kind of vague and, you know, has some different elements. So it's sometimes a little bit difficult to discern exactly what the policy is. We were presented the policy officially at a meeting on January twenty-third that Jim organized. He had been keeping us updated along the way, the overall process. We had opportunity to put and update it.
It's a little hard for the mic to pick you up.
Oh, sorry.
Because of height, and so if you can come down or the mic can come up, either way, is just fine.
How's that, is that better?
It's beautiful, thank you.
So at the January twenty-third meeting, they started to go through the whole presentation, and probably ninety-five percent of it, we were already familiar with. But there were two new pieces that were presented at that time, which came as kind of, you know, surprising and impactful news. The first piece was around the seasonal aspect, that instead of being something that we could just keep and maintain, it was now going to be something that was only available for seven months of the year as opposed to twelve, and that we would have to remove and reinstall. And obviously, you've seen these spaces, you can imagine what's involved. And certainly in my situation, where I have a very significant investment in the platforms to provide the safe dining, it's a huge deal on top of electricity and, and everything else that's involved. The second piece of news, which came out of the blue, was that the guideline was no more than one parking space in terms of the total area that we could use. And there was a provision that it was two for parallel parking, but Jim explained that it was exactly the same space in terms of square footage, it's just that when you overlaid that space on parallel parking spaces, it impacts two spaces, meaning you lose two parking spaces for the same amount of space, not that they were going to get more space. So again, we had been going along with all this, but, you know, very quickly I said, look, we're kind of wasting, you know, why are we investing all this time in consultants and your time and our time and everyone else's time? There's no way that I can do what I've done with one parking space that I have to take away after seven months. And Steve very quickly said, yeah, you know, I'm out, basically. And we sort of said, listen, if you want to kill it, just kill it. I mean, it's, COVID's over, if you want this all to go away, it can go away, but I, you know, we don't get this. So Helen Knapp was at the meeting, one of the trustees, she intervened very quickly and said, no, 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 we don't want to kill it. You know, we're not trying to kill it, you know, we're trying to find this kind of magic compromise that allows us to keep the good aspects of, of this outdoor dining and deal with some of the congestion issues and some of the parking issues and et cetera. So, and, you know, she said, listen, we appreciate this input, we weren't really, I guess they hadn't really realized how small a space one parking space was, it's basically two tables, et cetera. So they took that input away, said that they were going to take it into consideration and then come back with an update, which they did on March sixteenth in an email that, that Jim sent, which was basically this email. Hopefully, it's consistent with what you guys have seen as well. So this was confusing to me when I saw it. I'm sorry, one other important thing. So Helen asked us at the time of the January sixteenth meeting, how much space was the minimum that we would need to make it viable for us? And we came back, we hadn't done the calculations, it was the first time we'd heard about the issues, and the answer for me was three spaces, and the answer that for Steve was also three spaces, for different reasons, different cost dynamics. But we both have four spaces, we both came back and. We both came back and said the minimum that we could do was three spaces. So that was very clear input. So then, when I saw this, and as you said, as it says, please feel free to reach out to me with any questions. So I immediately called Jim. I said, Jim, you know I need three spaces. I've got four spaces. You know, four to three sounds like a 25% reduction to me. You're saying approximately half. You know, what's the story here? I don't want to waste money on an architect and time, et cetera, et cetera, just to go in front of the planning board and have them say, why are you asking for three quarters of the space when the guidance is approximately half, whatever approximately half is? And his answer verbally to me at the time, first thing he said is, listen, at the end of the day, the planning board is going to approve or not approve. So I can't guarantee you that you'll get approved. It's up to them. What I will say is, you have to reduce at least one parking space, and you need to show a meaningful reduction in seats. And if you do that, given that your location doesn't have issues with neighboring facades, doesn't have issues with congestion, doesn't have issues with parking, basically, he said, if you do that, I think it's a reasonable proposal. And then we'll see what, what the planning board says. So again, I'm just giving a little bit of this background, just so you understand where I'm coming from. I was very clear upfront. I had done the calculations already. It doesn't work, half the space. It says approximately half the space. You know, to me, approximately half is maybe 60%, maybe 55%. It's not 75%. I don't know why they wrote it this way, but I think some, some combination of approximately half rather than half, together with, obviously highlighting what they were really concerned about, neighboring facades and parking areas, and the comment at the bottom, that every location is slightly unique, so there's some wiggle room to understand what each location requires.
So with that, a quick question. Hey, Paul, could you move to the, to the drawing for a second? That's, I think that's Underhill's.
Yeah.
The La Casa drawing. There's some tables you have marked as fours and some of you have marked as twos. Could you take us through that?
Yeah, so basically, what happens on a, on a typical situation, is it possible for me to go back and address that question after the first couple of slides? Do you mind if I do that?
Yeah. Take us in whatever order you want.
Go back the prior two slides, because...
And Paul, the bottom of the slides is getting obscured by the...
Yeah, this one. So, you know, one of the reasons I was surprised at the last meeting, and again, it was, it was, I think, very confusing the way the information was presented, and each restaurant presented information in different ways. So I can see from your standpoint, things looking a little bit different. But both Underhill Crossing and La Casa Bronxville presented very similar proposals. It may not have been easy to compare them side by side, but we're both, we're the two restaurants that currently have four parking spaces, reducing one to three. The total space that Underhill Crossing has is actually larger than La Casa's space. It's 560 square feet versus the 496 that we represent, and that's just a factor of the fact that parallel parking spaces have slightly more square footage. Sorry, the diagonal parking spaces have slightly more square footage. So, you know, he basically did exactly what he was asked to do. He was asked to go from four to three, and that gives him 560 square feet. I was asked to go from four to three, and that gives me 496 square feet. He showed his space with seven tables and 26 seats. I showed my space with eight tables and 24 seats. So approximately the same. If you go forward to their diagram, because I think the issue was particularly around tables, you know, one of the things you see with the Underhill Crossing layout, first of all, they, you know, they've shown four tables on the left side of the space and only three tables on the right. And there's a very large space in the middle of the area with no tables. So, you know, he showed it with seven tables. You could easily fit 10 tables in there. And, but again, he, he did what he was asked to do. He, he reduced his space. He provided the tables and chairs that are in alignment with the guidance that came from, from Jim. Occupancy in restaurants is almost always defined by seats, or it is always defined by seats, not by tables. However, he shows the tables here, on any given night, it's not going to look like this. It may not even look like this at 6 o'clock versus 8 o'clock. You know, someone comes in, he's got two fours. Someone else comes in, they need a table for eight. You need two tables for two. You split the four into two twos. So tables are all getting, always getting moved and rearranged based on what people want. And, you know, believe me, if you call up Underhill's and say you've got a, a party of 10 for a graduation celebration with your family in town, they're not going to say, I'm sorry, the largest table we have is a table for four. They're going to combine the tables in a way that, that does that. So occupancy is always defined as seats because tables are very fungible, and they can be moved around and combined and split in, in, in all kinds of different ways. This space does have a maximum capacity based on the occupancy standards of 15 square feet.
Per chair of 38.
So this was presented as 26, and it has a maximum occupancy of 38. But again, he, he did what he was asked to do, and I think he presented a very good proposal, and I think it would be amazing, and I'm very happy that you guys approved it. So if we fast forward now to our situation, you know, in our situation, I can't show some tables because of my platforms and the way things are. Each platform is a table.
So there's totally eight tables in this space. We unfortunately can't combine tables just because of our layout here. So if someone comes and says, we need a table for eight outside, my answer is, I'm sorry, we can't do it. We just physically can't do it. I can't. Table inside or anything. You can do a table inside or 26 if you want. Open my tables in different ways.
So on any given night, I get some twos, I get some fours, and on average, with eight tables, I'm going to get about 24 seats of, of, of people seated because I'm just not going to get eight reservations for four people. It just doesn't work out that way. Some people want, they're just going out with their wives or whatever, and so it's a combination of fours and twos, and that was the way that I was able to meet the guidelines that Jim requested.
Yeah, so, you know, it is always a little arbitrary when everyone's being asked to reduce by half because it anchors on whatever people had done in the first place.
Right.
And Underhill's had created more space and more seats than you had in their initial plans. So when they come down by half, because they did reduce the number of seats by approximately half, luck of the draw, they were starting from a larger footprint.
There's, there's space. Not down by half.
No, I was referring to the number of seats. Okay. I, I understand what you're saying about the space. The space is coming down considerably, but it may not be...
25%.
May not be half. Go ahead.
And as the Italian...
Robaccio.
And everybody cut it in half.
Yeah.
Well, the guy who said we were giving...
Again, if I was told I had to cut it in half, you're wasting your time.
I was wasting my time.
All right.
We were told verbally that everyone had to cut it in half. And the trustees knew that both Underhill and La Casa needed three parking spaces.
So if you get approval for two parking spaces and half the capacity, however you want to define it...
Right.
You're not going forward with it?
Correct. It just doesn't work.
And why doesn't a payback period of two and a half years work? I mean, if I could get my money back on something in two and a half...
Well, it's a restaurant. You know, it's, it's not, it's, it's, you know, first of all...
There's no value on our time in a two and a half years, and...
Oh, I see what you're saying. That's a capital payout. That's not...
It's just based on the cash payout. And basically, what it means, if you just think about logically, I've got to, I've got to totally redesign it, rebuild it. I've got to take it all away.
And you remember the story?
Mm-hmm.
With the lectures here and everything else. I've got to reinstall it in April. I've got to go through two and a half cycles of that just to break, just to get the initial investment back, seven, eight, nine, two and a half years later. And these things don't last for 20 years. This is not a house I'm building here. This is an outdoor structure. So it's just, the numbers don't work. You know, Steve was in the same place. You know, he was asked if he could do half, and he said, no, I can't do half.
Yeah, I think the, the other thing that, that I struggle with when I look at this is not just the number of parking spaces, because depending on where you cut it off, maybe the village can stripe things in different places. You know, we're not, we're not part of all that. But it's also, I think, if I were the trustees, I would have been thinking about this. And as planning board, we think about sort of the visual impact of, you know, when you come into the village and, you know, it's your own storefront you're blocking, but it's still a very different look to seeing that building, depending on what the sheer length is of what you have right now. You have 10 of these. If you have eight, that's a different impact than if you have six than if you have five. So I think it's just another thing we're all thinking about as we look at this, and we're trying to balance making it work for you, because we love the outdoor dining in town, with having it achieve both what the trustees asked us to do and what we think is, you know, appealing for the village. So I think that's what we're collectively struggling with.
You know, and I heard that at the last meeting, and I did go back and look at it, you know, and, you know, it's, the proposal's 25% reduction versus current. Underhill's is a 25% reduction versus current as well. The seats are approximately half. So that's...
Ten to eight is 20%, right? Am I missing?
The space is, is, is 25% less. So there's about a, I think, five inches per table less or whatever.
Okay. Understood.
Yeah, so it's, it's 25% reduction in space versus current.
So you're not keeping the existing structure? You're, you're going to...
I can't. I've got to rebuild it.
You're going to make it smaller?
It was not, it was not built with the ability. First, first of all, the sizing's changing. Dimensionally, it's changing. There's some things that, we had an onsite review with both Jim and Chief Satrione to go through the whole proposal and everything, and the exact location. Chief Satrione asked me to make a couple of adjustments, which we're making. So I do need to rebuild it. It needs to be built with the ability to take it then back away. And so, yeah, it's a very significant investment. I think it's a very positive contribution to the community, but it's a very significant investment. So I just have one slide left.
Yeah. Go ahead, please.
But my request is to approve the original proposal. I believe it's consistent with Bronxville Village guidance and what was communicated to me, with approximately half the seats and at least one parking space reduction. It treats the two larger on-street dining restaurants in a consistent manner. It achieves the village goal of having attractive, viable outdoor dining. Helen was very clear that they did not want to kill this, that they wanted to keep it. It achieves, I think, the major goals of what was trying to be achieved overall with this thing, in reducing the congestion on the key streets of concern, increasing parking spaces, and making the dining seasonal. And nothing material is gained by reducing size. Doesn't, we don't have a parking space issue. We don't have a congestion issue. It doesn't work financially. So that's my request.
Okay, I'd propose maybe that we open up the public meeting and see if anyone would like to comment. I'm sorry, go ahead if you have something else.
I just had, I had one statement from a customer that I was hoping to read if I could.
Please.
She's, her name is Joan Sharp. She's 84 years old and can't be in a enclosed setting like this with her people. She asked that I read this for. "The opening of La Casa as a new outdoor dining restaurant in Bronxville was such a blessing for older folks like me who were at high risk for contracting COVID. When the pandemic hit, my doctor warned me to stop eating in restaurants, but as senior citizens, my friends and I love eating at a nice restaurant. It is one of the few things we can still do. La Casa al Fresco dining is exceptional, and it starts with safety. The individual cabanas provide protection from other diners that do not take the same precautions we do in terms of germs and illness. And it also has excellent fresh air circulation, which is also very important. The cabana also provides protection from the elements, so in cases where it has rained, we have been able to finish our meal in a relaxed way. Beyond the safety and comfort, we love the great food as well as the margaritas. I sincerely hope the planning board approves La Casa's application so I can continue to enjoy the special dining experience with my friends."
Thank you. Okay, so is there anyone from the public who would like to say a few words? There are two of you, so you can fight it out in terms of... Please go ahead. Just let us know your name, please.
Yes, sure. My name is Jim Bun. I'm a customer of, this is the fourth location, or fourth restaurant in the same location. My wife and I have been going to all of them, all the way back to Tumble Downs when we moved here from London. Yeah, we, which we miss sorely. We also have two sons who are grown now, married and all that, who happen to be like any of the young people, love Mexican food. But they go to, you know, Burrito Poblano, and ones with little tiny kids love to go up to Crestwood. And so neither place is really...
...enjoyable for us.
We love this particular place, and we're so excited that the space has been consistently sort of upgraded. And I'd like to make a few just observations, just as a customer, you know, as well. Number one, it's a family atmosphere, which always surprises me, the nice vibe that goes on there with, when I say family, I don't mean little kids, although I've seen the art here and there. But the elderly are there, so I feel welcome. But, you know, people want to come there. Teenagers are there, and a lot of family things. It's really quite interesting, particularly since it's a higher-end Mexican restaurant. People aren't used to paying higher-end prices for Mexican-type food. It's also got a really nice bar.
Unfortunately, I can't partake in it.
I'm recently, I'm very immunocompromised. I had a massive coronary a year ago, January. And the, the best thing about the restaurant is that it does have... Oh, I'm so sorry.
It's all good.
That it has these unique kind of booths that I feel safe in versus, and I can't go to Underhill's anymore because it's tight inside, and it's like a massive room actually trapping things, particularly in the cold weather where the bears down. So I've never found trouble parking. That municipal garage is great. And when I was able to go to Taco Project, I parked in the municipal garage, able to walk a block, get my extra steps. So I just find there's so many good things about the Casa that I'd like...
To protect it.
So to speak, you know, to keep it thriving. And I don't understand all the ramifications of parking, and I know you have to be fair. I, I understand that. But it's, it's a unique restaurant in a new, unique location that I think looks pretty good. It never bothered me on the, because it's kind of got that European, you know, Mexican, South American vibe of being outside. You expect kind of a tent and something temporary is kind of cool and inviting when you need it. I've been in there, I've been in that restaurant in extremely inclement weather, pouring rain, but parked across the street, no problem. And most of the time, I walk because of, I just try to get my steps in. So I would like to really defend this restaurant as it is.
With the original amount of parking, I mean, of tables and booths, it's very uniquely set up.
I was so surprised that we had this advantage. And I would hate to have to suddenly start to have to wait for tables or have a backup on the outside because of people who need to be outside. So that's my two cents.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you guys.
I think we have another speaker, please.
Good evening. It's nice to meet you. My name is James Pacora. I happen to live right up the hill from La Casa Restaurant in the Graham Burton Court Townhouses. I'm a real estate agent. I work for Merrill Lee in Manhattan, but I'm walking by that restaurant every day. And he keeps it meticulously clean. They wash the sidewalks, they maintain the flowers. It is a beautiful addition in my eyes to this beautiful village that you have here. I understand the problem may be parking, but it adds much more. He just did, he did this as a startup, and, and it's finally starting to pay off from him. And I hate to see him lose that opportunity because he loves this village, too. So I wish he would consider that and try to preserve as much space as he can so he can continue with his business and provide good service to this Bronxville village. Thank you.
Terrific. Thank you. I think we have another public comment, please.
Good evening. First of all, my name's Matt Craig. I live in the village with my family. We love it here. I'm a lifelong New Yorker. Born in New York, raised in New York. I'm a lifelong New Yorker. Born in New York, raised in New York. Westchester County is where the culinary arts have gone to die, period. So it's great that we have, Under Hills Crossing is great that we have La Casa. I was here last time and I know what you have. I think, you know, as peers, I love what you're doing and I understand the onerous job that you have. To figure out the ambiguity with diagonal spots versus horizontal spots. So I want to do one thing, you know, we've already touched, I don't want to rehash what I talked about last time. We all remember it, I would think. There's one thing nobody's talked about. Because the food scene in Westchester County is so grim compared to New York. Those two restaurants that we've been talking about extensively tonight, they have a lot of call. It's very difficult to get a reservation at La Casa if I call anything 72 hours or less. It's almost not going to happen on a weekend. That's great. And so what this outdoor dining does is it provides my family an opportunity to eat in Bronxville, spend money here instead of going into New York City when we want to have a better meal. So La Casa is not cheap. It's fairly priced for what it is. My family, we are foodies. We don't mind spending $200 on a meal with a child. When we eat here, they benefit. You benefit. The town benefits. And I would say, please give him the variance. I know it's not really a variance, but give, please give Spencer the consideration to have his three seats. Because by doing so, it increases our chance of getting a reservation on a weekend. It's as simple as that. You know, and I understand that you have to figure out the diagonal street spaces for Under Hills. I know that they've all kind of compromised and come down. I'm asking you to compromise and come up a little bit. And I, and I understand the reasons why you want to go, wants to go his way. But as somebody who wants to eat out and then I want to have good food, and no offense to you guys, I should have a memorial plaque on your wall for, for the amount of burgers my family's eaten at Pete's. But La Casa and Under Hills Crossing are special circumstances. And my understanding is that you ask them to reduce, you ask them to take down and reestablish a store. So I believe La Casa is attempting to, to meet that standard and Under Hills is doing that too. So I, I see that both restaurateurs have kind of come from where they were to where they, where you would like. They're, they're moving in the right direction to where you want them to be, which is a good thing. The other thing is, I haven't heard any disagreement about, from, from Stephen Palm or Spencer Pingel, about holding to a standard, an aesthetic standard that will complement the village. And, and so I think that's still very much in play. So you're, the panel is somewhat getting what it wants. And I, Spencer wants to have what he wants. I think you're all moving in the right direction. Thank you for the time. We appreciate the opportunity to address the panel.
Terrific. Thank you. I think we have another public comment, please.
Sorry. So Gilberto Diaz, love living in the village, love eating in the village. My son works at both Pete's and La Casa. And we love the opportunity that these restaurants all give. You know, I could say a bunch of amazing things about all the restaurants, including Under Hills, because we love them all. But I think I'd rather focus the attention on outdoor dining. Everybody's in favor of all of it. I think everybody, communal. And I think it's about figuring it out as far as what makes sense for everybody. But in the process to doing that, I do think that the approach of being fair and even though of the ambiguity, I'm trying to do what's best across the board is something that, you know, you guys are being challenged with. And I, and I think that's where it becomes difficult. I think that, just looking at the presentation, it's almost unfortunate that Spencer didn't have more seats in there in his beginning because I think that leaving the spaces alone, just saying that, or reducing the seats would have probably gotten it approved. And, and I think that's unfortunate because it seems like both applications have very similar seating, very similar square footage, very similar reduction from parking spaces. So again, I'm not into the weeds as far as everything was going on, but based on the slides that I see, it seems comparable that if Under Hills was approved, based on the application of La Casa, should be approved. I love both establishments. I love all the establishments. I would love to see all of these establishments continue with the outdoor dining space in a way that makes sense. Hearing Spencer say that financially it wouldn't make sense to keep the outdoor space would be a big hit, especially with all of the friends and family that we have that have smaller kids. The outdoor areas are amazing for smaller kids. They just feel freer. The families feel better to enjoy the outdoor space. So I would love to see La Casa with proposed plan get approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? It sounds like there's one follow-up. Yes, please.
I think it's interesting how far we've come as a village. I can, it was always sad when there was another gallery come, who came in or a store that was, you know, just completely sat vacant or whatever for years. And I like the energy that's, you know, come since, since COVID. I think, you know, my neighbor over there, you know, paid you guys a compliment for, and the trustees for revitalizing the village. But I think we, we really need to say, what can we do to help each business thrive to its potential? And maybe a one-size-fits-all, fits-all approach doesn't really work and fit all. 20% or 10% or take four chairs away or whatever it is. I think it's important that we just really have a mentality. We used to eat, other than Tumble Downs and one or two places, and Pete's has always been a favorite of ours. And now we have a diner, so if I get a booth, I can eat there. Otherwise, I have to leave. But we always eat in Takahoe, you know, because they've such a good job of, you know, maintaining restaurants and that kind of thing. And it's nice to see Bronxville kind of coming back into the race, so to speak. And I think we really need to do, and see what then we can, and nurture each one where we can. I like your comments about the kids being able to sit. You know, Taco Project, yeah, that's, that's a big deal. It's raining outside. And we want the kids inside eating, you know, as opposed to running to the altar. You know, five million miles in a car in bad weather just to get the hot dogs and stuff. So that's it. I just, I just really like the. The sea change of helping each one of our businesses thrive.
Okay, thank you. All right, I think with that, we're going to close the public meeting and go into discussion. So who would like to start us off? Yes, Tom.
I, I think the guidelines are sort of inconsistent and it's very difficult to, I think, apply, apply guidelines that are exactly the same across all of the entities that we're talking about. I do think that there's a difference. I said this last time, but I think that there is a difference between being on Park Place versus being on Pond Field and being on Sagamore. And I think La Casa has a particularly difficult, because of the slope in the street. And I think that then impacts what you can do as far as seating and tables and all of that. I think you pointed out that Under Hills probably has more flexibility as far as what to do with the tables and all of this. So the numbers that we're dealing with saying, oh, it went from X to Y and it's, you know, is a little bit nebulous to begin with. So I think you did go from four down to three. There has been some reduction. I do always compliment you on the way that you've built this up and how it looks. And I don't think that you're hiding a lot of other storefronts there as, as well. So I, I think I would be inclined to, you know, approve this as, as you've presented it.
Who's next?
Thanks. I agree with everything you said. La Casa has reduced from four to three, as Under Hills has. There is no parking, as we talked about. There's plenty of parking in the lot across the street. And like last meeting, I am in favor of, of the proposal as is submitted.
I am troubled by the fact that everybody else has reduced to essentially the equivalent of one parallel parking space. Now, Under Hills has a bit of a problem and we've tried to address that. And you spent a lot of time comparing yourself to them, but we debated about that one and realized that they weren't getting much more frontage than what Pete's ended up with and El Baccio. And this is a pretty massive interruption and obstruction of, you know, Bronxville's architecture. And two parking spaces is still well above the amount that others have received. And this is public space, not, it's not the merchant space. And, you know, this is not something that should be lightly given away. And I'm troubled by the fact that everybody else has really worked to compact their outdoor dining pretty close to the guidelines. And this is nowhere near close to the guidelines. So, let me finish, please. And I'm troubled by that. This is, this is, you know, we need to regulate this outdoor dining. We need to interrupt it so that it's not permanent structures. And we need to keep it in a size and a scale that doesn't, is inconsistent with what I think the village has in terms of aesthetic. So I'm, I'm opposed.
Is it possible to respond? There's a practical part of it?
The public part is over and you've had about half an hour to, but go ahead if you're.
If there's, if there's something that you just want to correct, yeah.
I do think, I followed the conversation carefully last time. I think there was a misperception that Under Hills, because of the parallel things and, oh, it's three, but it's not really three, et cetera. They are the length of three parallel parking spaces. It's 40 feet long. You can go back and look at the drawing again. It's, it's nothing like El Baccio, nothing like you approved for El Baccio.
I, I don't know the exact dynamics. All I can tell you is that cut their seating in half consistently calculated, all right?
Let, let us keep going. Let us, let us keep going. Eileen, let's give you a chance to speak up.
I agree with Jim because I feel like a lot of the other stores have, restaurants have brought down their, their space outside. And the mandate or the, with the resolution from the village is that they want to really bring down the outdoor dining. And I feel like because it takes up three parallel parking spots, that's, is that 60 feet? It's, it's massive and we're trying to bring it down. And while it's just, you know, pretty, when you're walking up the streets and it's very, you know, aesthetically beautiful with the flowers and it's nice from the side, from the street, it's massive. Like it's just, it obstructs the beautiful building that's there. And I think that's what the village is really trying to go for is to make things a little bit smaller and not make it, you know, so big, but still accommodate the, the restaurants so that they can have outdoor dining and so that people can enjoy it. And it's unfortunate that you're not able to take the seating that you had now and make it with five stalls with four seats or six seats and make them, you know, five or six, you know, five seats in it and make it 25. Because I don't know the exact sizes of it. I'm not an architect. But it's a shame that you can't adjust some of the seating within a smaller, you know, space. Because I just don't think it's in the spirit of bringing down, you know, your footprint on the street.
So with that, I think, you know, it sounds like we've got mixed perspectives on here. I think I had hoped, you know, based on the discussion we had last time, that, you know, based on the feedback we had given, that there would be some modest compromise that could be made here because I think we all favor outdoor dining. We all want to be in the business of getting the yes on outdoor dining. But I do think the, the sheer bulk of this and the fact that, you know, it's in terms of really the change 20, 25%, whatever you call it, I think that gets a little far field from, you know, what the, what the trustees tasked us to do. So we would love to see something outdoors, you know, happen there. But if, if you're going to ask us to put it to a vote now, I think it's, you know, going to go down. So that's, that's up to you. I'll stop there for a second to see if you want us to go ahead with the vote.
Can I just ask one thing? Can I add to my comments or?
Please.
I think we're, maybe I'm getting confused, but we're getting confused a little bit with the width and the depth. If you look at it, it's only eight feet deep and 62 feet long versus Under Hills, which we approved them going from four to three. And they take the whole length of a parking spot. So they go 14 feet times 40. So if you look at it as comparison, there, the square footage is bigger. So let's not, let's not confuse the visual impression. I mean, there's nothing else over there. And we're not, I, I, I just don't, I don't get where you guys are.
No, no, I, I agree with you. We're not.
I'm just trying to just, let's not, let's not, because it's this big thing, I disagree with that. He, he has gone from four to three. We approved Under Hills and we had a dissenting vote on that as well. And if you look at the square foot comparison, I think that's the better thing to look at than something that's a boxy versus a rectangle. I just wanted to, you know, I'll stop with that. Do you understand that?
Yeah, well, I get it.
I mean, I, I'm not, I don't, I'm not looking at it in terms of square footage. I really am looking at it in terms of the massing.
I just think you, I would, sorry, go ahead. I wish you, that's why I'm pointing the point. Let's, we should look at it both ways, maybe to be fair to both of us. That let's look at the square foot and the length and say that what we approved for Under Hills is a bigger space than what people are opposed to for La Casa.
No, understood. It's just when it comes out, it doesn't come out past the vehicles that are parked on either side. And I think the square footage just, just doesn't bother me.
It's the visual impression. If you have one building that's 10 by 100 and you have another that's 30 by 30, they're the same square feet, but they make a very different.
And if Under Hills wanted to stretch along Pond Field Road, well, three spots is. And I don't think that would be something I would have approved. Of course, I did vote against it.
Not only, but it also covers two other stores or two other operations.
This doesn't cover them.
It obscures.
Well, it obscures, right. It obscures. And I had trouble with that as well.
Yeah, it was a good point you made.
I know there may be a question or two out there, but we're done with the public meeting at this point, so we can't really go into that. So the, the question for the owner is, you know, whether you want us to proceed.
I don't know what to do. I think the obvious are terrible for me. I mean, the idea that I have holes for the same amount, actually a little less space, that's going to turn down. It doesn't make a value on those bases. It doesn't have issues with congestion. And Under Hills was approved for more space, taking up three hundred parking spaces and we won't have ten lot in there, which is.
The.
I think it's that, I think it's that.
I don't think that we're bound to treat you exactly the same as Under Hills. And we're not bound to treat you exactly the same as Pete's and El Baccio. If we did that with the two other ones we approved as opposed to the one you're looking at, you'd have a much smaller space than we'd be willing to approve. So I don't think that, and Under Hills was a special case because of that angled parking. And I just don't think you have that. And I don't think that can.
Where Jim's going, Jim, I'm just wondering. Jim said, is this word for a change?
I'm sorry. Jim also said that the planning board is the one that makes the decision. So I, I understand that. Yeah, so, so thank you.
So I think it's just one question, then we'll go ahead and take action. Do, do, we always want to give the applicant a chance to decide whether or not they want us to take it. Go ahead, Albert.
Is there one of these other than five that you would be okay with, the dissenters?
Well, the, each one of the proposals, other than the last one.
Did you go with seven?
I'm sorry. Each one of the proposals there. Each one of the proposals there, other than the last one, takes up three parking spaces. Because you can't use part of a parking space.
Well, what we don't know, and Paul, you may not know, is whether or not they can restripe, and if they take two and a half, whether or not it ends up in fact being three spaces.
But I thought you guys, your bigger issue was the width.
That's the case for me.
So, so seven is, seven and six takes the width out of the way. I don't think the park, I just think the parking spaces there are not, I mean, if we give one back, is it going to be some, oh my God, there's another parking spot next to La Casa? There's parking spots there all the time, all day long.
I think all we can vote on is what, what the proprietor puts before us, right? And so if you put eight before us, there's one vote. If you put seven, there may be a different vote, a six may be a different vote.
Would it be a vote or should it be negative? I'd say for not to have a vote.
Well, but to see, can we just, instead of having to come back?
Right, but we'd all rather waste less, absolutely. Let's have a discussion.
Instead of having to come back with seven or six, what, what, just so he has an idea is, is there another, is there another one of these that you guys would be okay with? Outside of, obviously, eight.
But the first three use three parking spaces. Or at least two and a portion, so you're not going to make half.
But if some people's...
I'm agreeing with you.
If some people's objection is girth width, then reducing to seven or six, does that make it more favorable?
Girth width is an issue because of the slope to some extent.
No, you're gonna, seven tables means you're gonna have one less, it's gonna be smaller. It's gonna be narrower.
I, I can't speak for Eileen or Jim, for myself, if, you know, you had come back with six, you know, I think I would have had a different perspective. But Eileen, Jim, you may have different perspectives too, but...
I, I think two quick parking spaces would be a reduction by half, and that, to me, seems consistent with what we've done to the other three restaurants.
Eileen, you have a perspective.
I just would have liked to see some change in your plan, because you didn't come back with any modification.
So not a specific number, but we understand.
Yeah.
I don't feel it was any good.
So based on that feedback, would you like us to vote?
I think it's not going to be all...
Well, I think we need to take some action. And I don't see, if you don't plan to, to change, to re-propose anything, then I think we should just vote on the proposal in front of us, which you seem to say is three parking spaces, or you're not going to move forward.
No, I just think about comments like Joe's, um, after, and honestly, I just, to me, once the facts are made out in terms of what Under Hills has done and is proved, you look at it side by side, it's been all last week you've talked about being consistent.
No, no. These are not, this is, there's, we're not being consistent, we're trying to be equitable. Because there's...
Actually, you're very consistent, because you, you turned, you were against mine. And you're negative of ours as well, very consistent.
I'm not negative about yours. I think your, your, your restaurant is a great one. Everybody in town loves it. What you've done outside is, I think, a very good rendering of outdoor dining. It's just too big, given the guidelines that the trustees have given us. And I think it would be consistent with our mandate to approve giving you two parking spaces for what you, you intend to do. And, and you can't be consistent, because every situation is different. We're trying to be equitable going forward.
The way I understand that was, and you mentioned it Jim as well, I'm the location that doesn't have issues. I'm not blocking.
I guess in the end, though, that's the judgment.
Yeah.
We're, we're, we're going to make, so I think at this point, do we have a motion? Either in favor or against? Anyone can bring up any motion they'd like.
Well, if we vote against, obviously, it's, if this proposal, it's going to be three to two. I'm just guessing. Is he allowed to come back again?
Christine, do you want to comment on that? Paul?
If, if it can't be substantial, the same application.
Mm-hmm. Right, but for instance, if he came back...
I mean, would you, would you guys... I think it'd be better if, actually, if it was all about...
Yeah. You should ask the holder.
And break his back. Many of them are...
Well, I guess someone here could choose to make a motion to table this.
Would you rather have them have the option?
Well, but aren't you better off voting for it, and it goes down? And then he would have to come back with a substantially different proposal?
I just don't, I, I don't want to make it difficult for him to come back with an improved proposal.
Yeah, I think that's not fair.
Right, well, I mean, what we're talking about is, you know, the structure is also different than what the guidelines had, you know, indicated. But I think, I think we've gotten comfortable with that aspect.
But shouldn't we be consistent?
It's a different layout. It's a different, you know, the, the slope would make a structure like that, I would think prohibitive. You know, we all are making different judgments.
No, no, I agree. And I, I, I think each application is, got its own individual aspects that need us to think about.
But Paul, would a turn down at eight of these stop him from coming back with a different proposal for fewer in the future?
Well, I mean, you know, if you argue, you know, seven is substantially different.
Right, so it might be too close, and we might not be able to accept the application.
Well, with the understanding that it may not have a second, I would be willing to move to approve granting La Casa two parking spaces in front of his establishment for outdoor dining.
I'll second that.
But that means you can't come back and ask for six or seven, right?
I think that's...
That's a five.
Yeah, and then I would say another five.
Yeah, I don't know if you're going to get a majority on that.
I'd rather postpone it.
It's up to you, but we can, we can make a vote on that.
I just didn't want to sit here deadlocked, waiting for the applicant to tell us whether or not he wants to go forward with any one of these proposals. Because this is the second time we've considered it, and I suppose we can do a third one, but I'm not sure what that serves.
We don't have any more facts than we have.
Right, right. And, you know, every other applicant has reached a, a compromise with us that's been workable for their needs and for what we view as the guidelines that have been established and the interests of the village. So...
Can you describe the compromise that Under Hill Crossing made?
Under Hill Crossing reduced their capacity by half and shrank their footprint considerably so that there was quite a bit less intrusion on the visual space from the street.
They had started, admittedly, with a larger footprint and a larger tent.
The Baccio went down by half. Pete's went down by half. You, you know, you have your interpretations of it, but, okay, that's fine, that's fine. So there's a motion, there's a second.
And that's to go to two spaces, right? Okay, why don't we go ahead and have a vote on that? All in favor of the two spaces?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, do we have another motion?
I move we adjourn.
We, well, then we should table it then, right? Is that what's the right, we said?
Okay.
What's that going to prove?
Right.
Gives them an opportunity to come back. I mean...
I think you said to us, you're not going to do it for less than...
I'd like to second the motion to adjourn.
So that means you'd have to resubmit an application.
You haven't been turned down. It means you haven't been turned down, and you have the ability to resubmit.
Okay.
Yeah.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
All in favor.
All right, we'll look forward to the next meeting. We'll see if we get to see some of you again, and thank you so much for coming.